Welcome to the Supervisor's Candidate Forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any particular political party or candidate. This Candidate Forum is a service to the community. I am Vivian Hart, the moderator for this forum. Now, the candidates will take questions from you, the audience members, during this forum. You can submit your questions at any time during the forum. To ask a question, find the QA button in Zoom. Usually it's at the bottom. Move your cursor to bring up the menus and the QA is generally in the bottom of your screen and click on that icon. When the QA panel opens, type your question directly into the box and League members will collect the questions and communicate them to me and I will ask them of the candidates. So let me tell you a little bit about what the Board of Supervisors does. The Board of Supervisors is responsible for steering public policy in Pima County. The Board provides direction to the county administrator and the county's various departments to create safe communities, nurture economic development, sustainably manage natural resources, and protect public health. In addition to overseeing the delivery of many municipal services, including roads, parks, libraries, and law enforcement, Board members are responsible for approving the county budget. Board members also set the amount of taxes to be levied. So now I'd like to introduce the two candidates that are in this forum today. Steve Christie is a Republican candidate. He is a lifelong Tucsonan who attended local schools and is a 1976 graduate of American University in Washington DC with a degree in political science. He started working in the family business Galloway Motors in 1973 as a service lot boy and worked his way up through all dealership departments before becoming president and general manager in 1985. In 1997, he bought total ownership of the dealership and he sold it in 2007. He served twice as president of the Tucson New Car Dealers Association. He was president of the Arizona Automobile Dealers Association, chair of the Tucson Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce also. He is a member of the Tucson Airport Authority, the Southern Arizona Leadership Council, the Rotary Club of Tucson, a life member of Tucson Conquistadors, and a member of the Breakfast Club of Tucson. The Democratic candidate is Steve Diamond. He has lived in Pima County for 50 years. He's a 1976 graduate of the University of Arizona School of Music with a high distinction in music theory. His 40-year career in information technology includes positions as software architect and as chief information officer. More recently, Mr. Diamond has been a community organizer, a citizen lobbyist, and a teacher of mindfulness and meditation. He is a member of the National Writers Union. He is on the Legislative Committee of the Pima Area Labor Federation. He's a precinct committee person for LD-10 in the Pima County Democratic Party. And he is also a co-founder and co-chair of the Pima County Democrats Labor Caucus and a co-leader of Justice Alliance in indivisible South, Southern Arizona. Thank you both for being here. And now it's time for the questions. This is how this portion of the forum will go. You will each have two minutes to introduce yourselves and then I will ask you many questions. The first candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer and the second candidate will have one minute to respond. And then the first candidate will have 30 seconds to respond to that. And the questions will be asked in, on a rotating basis, back and forth. After the questions, you'll each have one minute for a closing statement. So let's begin. Candidate Christie, you have two minutes to introduce yourself.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, thank you very much for holding this forum and good afternoon to you, Mr. Diamond. I appreciate the League of Women Voters providing this forum. I'm very grateful to the voters of District Four for their faith in me, allowing me to win the primary, and I'm especially humbled by winning by such a large and decisive margin. I won every precinct in my district. The upcoming general election will offer the District Four voters the most clear contrast between me and my opponent and showcase the accomplishments we made during my first term as supervisor. Fixing our roads has been a top priority of mine and I'm proud to say that since becoming supervisor, over 70 miles of District Four roads have been repaired with much more repair coming soon, as much more repair is needed. I have been the strongest and most avid law enforcement partner that Sheriff Napier has on the Board of Supervisors. I have fought relentlessly for receiving all Stone Garden grants and other law enforcement monies every step of the way and every single time. I have been the champion of businesses, large and small, especially restaurants and gyms who have been forced and faced with the brutality of overreaching regulations imposed by the Board of Supervisors. No other supervisor has spoken more clearly, resolutely, or effectively on behalf of small business than I, as I believe small business survival is the future of reopening for a strong local economy. I have established an original and unique district model for constituent services never before created by any supervisor with staffed offices in the Vale, Carole, and Tucson, Green Valley, Salute to Communities, as well as Mount Lemon and the Tank of Ernie Valley. My office runs efficiently and lean and my office has returned over $400,000 to taxpayers in unspent monies since I became supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Candidate Diamond, you have two minutes to introduce yourself.
Thank you very much. Thanks to the League of Women Voters. Thanks to the public for participating and thank you, Mr. Christie, for your participation as well. I'm Steve Diamond. I'm running to be the first Democrat ever to represent District Four on the Board of Supervisors. I'm passionate about the well-being and the future of our community and I'm also dismayed by the divisiveness I've seen during several years of observing the current board. I'm especially dismayed by attempts to count some voices in the community as being less worthy of being heard than others. So I stand for inclusiveness and for equity and I pledge to represent all the people of Pima County, not just entrenched special interests. I will work toward justice and inclusion for disadvantaged communities, working families, and the shrinking middle class, by which I mean economic justice, social justice, and environmental justice. I intend to help grow the local economy out of the present recession without imposing tax increases or giving away taxpayer money. My economic plan will invest county money to support the economy from the ground up. I will bring a data-driven, science-based, solution-oriented approach to county governance. I'll collaborate with fellow board members, with county administration, and with diverse voices in the community to reach the best decisions for all concerned. I will never stand idly by while some voices are squelched or ignored. We're all in this together. Our best hope for the future is to support and to uplift one another. Finally, a word about electability. When I first announced last year, people told me, "You'll never be elected in that district." But after seeing last month's primary results, they're changing their tune. Mr. Christie mentioned that he had won all precincts over his Republican rival in the primary. Well, I won 46 out of 54 precincts if you just count my votes against Mr. Christie. That's not a fair comparison, but it's true.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now we're going to go to the questions. Mr. Diamond, you will be first. You'll have one and a half minutes to answer this question. What is the most important thing you want to accomplish as supervisor?
I want to bring unity to this community. I, as I mentioned, I see that there are, the strength of this community, I feel, is in its diversity. And when all the voices are heard, when all the voices are not only heard but are paid attention to, then I think the strength of this community will emerge and must emerge. The current business as usual on the part of the board doesn't always count all the voices. And so that is job one. The next thing is that in order to invest in projects that are important to the public good, to the common good of the community, we're going to need to get out of this recession. We're going to need to grow the economy because otherwise we won't have the money to invest. So I have an economic plan that involves lifting up all boats by investing county money in local businesses, small, medium, and large businesses, and also lobbying other institutional spenders to spend more of their money locally and to raise county revenues without raising tax rates by having dollars recirculate in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Christie, you have one minute to respond.
I would like to continue my three areas of focus that I've championed for the last four years, particularly roads. That has been a huge issue in our community for a long time now. They've been woefully neglected and it is affecting people at many different levels in the quality of life areas. Fortunately, we have just been able to start a pay-as-you-go or pay-go system which calls for repairing and rehabilitating every mile of road in unincorporated, unincorporated Pima County within 10 years without raising taxes or bonding or issuing any kind of stimulus along those lines. That plan I'm going to champion and to keep in the forefront. I think it's important for all of us that regardless of what the economic condition is, we must keep care of our roads.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Thank you. What Mr. Christie isn't telling you, by the way, when he mentions his record of having championed 70 miles worth of road improvements in District Four is that that 70 miles represents a 20% share of the overall budget that was allocated to roads. Each district got the same budget for road repair, so there is no special accomplishment there.
All right. Thank you. The next question, Mr. Christie, you will begin with one and a half minutes. The Tucson City Council recently passed a resolution to fight climate change at the local level. Should the Board of Supervisors do something similar? And if so, what actions could the county take?
Just to clarify Mr. Diamond's last statement, in 2018, I was able to convince the Board of Supervisors to amend our District Four's road repair plan and shifted what was going to be roughly $60,000 for District Four and was able to amend it to over $600,000. So clearly, that was a very effective effort on my part to make sure that my district got its funds. As far as the city council doing its climate change issues, I don't believe that the Pima County should involve itself to the extent that it's, looks to me like it's going to be prohibitive and punitive on businesses and the community, and expensive to install whatever sustainability issues that the city council is trying to do. Clearly, there is more of an agenda behind the climate change issues being implemented by the city and I certainly would not want to see the county deeply mired in the expense or the details of trying to shift everything to sustainable energy while not taking into consideration the need for certain current energy systems that we have.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, one minute to respond.
Thank you. I agree with efforts to switch to sustainable energy as much as possible without damaging businesses. We can nurture businesses locally that are involved in sustainable energy. And I really take issue with Mr. Christie's dismissal of the science involved. Mr. Christie mentioned when we were appearing before the Arizona Daily Star Board of Editorial Board the other day that he doesn't believe that the science of human-caused climate change is real. And I think that there's a problem there. We need to have reality-based, science-based governance here. If we are basing our decisions on science denial, then we're in trouble.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Christie, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Do I believe in climate change? Yeah, I believe the climate is changing all the time and has been for millennia. Is man the cause of these climate change instances? I don't fully believe so and I don't see that there's been adequate science backing it and I think you can find just as much science that says that there is no connection between man-made climate change and the natural course that we are experiencing with climate change.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, you're first, one and a half minutes to answer this question. Will you support the county's Sonoran Desert Preservation Plan?
Yes, I support the Sonoran Desert Preservation Plan and I also support, as with all of the planning documents that the county has produced, they're based on careful study and they also deserve to have ongoing scrutiny, ongoing study, to change the parameters where they're necessary to change and to preserve the parameters that are still in good effect. I also think that it's incumbent upon the board to base its decisions on the plan and not to override zoning, for example, where the plan doesn't allow for a particular kind of zoning and there's a request made, say, by a developer to override that. I think the board should stick to the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Christie, you have one minute to respond. Unmute yourself, please.
Excuse me, sorry. The Sonoran Plan has been in effect and will remain in effect until there's any kind of legislation by the board otherwise, which I do not see forthcoming. I know that the development community and the county worked diligently to come to accommodation some years ago and it seems to have created some kind of accommodation between the two entities and I think that's very positive. Certainly, we want to protect and nurture our most valuable asset, which is the, our Sonoran Desert here in Pima County. But by the same token, I think that that Sonoran Plan is enough in that it fulfills the need and the desires of those that were pushing it and in favor of it. I don't think there's any need to expand it and I don't see that this is going to be an issue coming up.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, you have 30 seconds to respond.
I agree that our environment is our most precious resource and I think that, again, science-based solutions to preserving the environment are extremely important. So I think Mr. Christie and I are in partial agreement on this in any case. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, Mr. Christie, you'll have one and a half minutes to begin. We've seen the effects of COVID-19 on public health in our community. Do you believe in a mandate for wearing masks and what would you do differently than what is now being done?
We have seen what COVID and the reaction to it has wreaked upon our community at so many different levels. I do not believe in a mandate for masks. I feel there is personal responsibility that can be exhibited by all of our citizens. I always thought it was you wear a mask if you can't social distance, not if you can't wear, if you can't social distance, you will wear a mask too. So I think that there's been a lot of confusion over that issue. It's created a lot of controversy. And the science, I'm sorry, I still don't feel that the science is adequate that says that wearing a mask will prevent the transmission of the disease to the dimension that it's being presented as. If I were looking back, as I do, as to how the county has addressed the COVID issue, I feel that there were a lot of unintended consequences that were made as a result of the county's proclamations and their insertions into the operations of businesses that have been devastating. I'm very concerned about one of the most vulnerable groups we have in our community and that's the small business community and it has been absolutely attacked and torn apart by punitive actions in order to forward an agenda on this COVID issue.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, you have one minute to respond.
Thank you. Well, once again, we're seeing science denial on Mr. Christie's part and again, I say it is not appropriate to have someone setting our public policy based on denying established science. That is just not going to be helpful for our community. So I agree completely with the mask mandate that Pima County has instituted and I also agree with working with business owners for sensible regulations. And I don't think that the, that the small business owners are one of the most endangered groups in this community, though. I think that our disadvantaged communities, the homeless tenants struggling to meet their rent, and our immigrant communities, communities of color, are much more greatly disadvantaged than our small business owners.
Thank you very much. Mr. Christie, you have 30 seconds to respond.
I would have to say that unless you actually owned a business and operated a business and have to make a payroll and are responsible for the lives of perhaps dozens of employees and putting food on their table and all of this future issue has been shattered by this COVID regulation, I think it shows a lack of understanding of the business community to be so blase about the fact that they're not an endangered community. You try and tell a restaurant owner or a gym owner or any small business owner that they are not suffering under this COVID proclamations and you'll get a much different answer.
Thank you. And the next question, Mr. Diamond, you will begin with one and a half minutes. Stone Garden is a federal grant program of money to defray the cost of sheriff deputies cooperating with the Border Patrol. Do you support the county's acceptance of Stone Garden funding, Mr. Diamond?
I do not. I do not support the county's acceptance of Stone Garden funding and I will tell you exactly why. The terms of the Operation Stone Garden Grant to the Pima County Sheriff's Department require that our sheriff's deputies collaborate with the US Border Patrol, that they actually work under the supervision of Border Patrol supervisors and that they conduct what's called saturation traffic stops in particular areas. And what that means is that they're making traffic stops based on flimsy pretexts such as a cracked windshield or a broken taillight and then they are using their gut to determine whether they think the person they've stopped is possibly an illegal immigrant. Then they contact ICE and they try to determine this person's status. Data supplied by the sheriff's department right here in Pima County show that those stops are being conducted in a racially profiling manner. This is divisive to our community. It doesn't help with our community's safety and this is not, as some have asserted, free money from the federal government. It comes with strings attached that we should not be allowing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Christie, you have one minute to respond.
Well, I would, I would suggest that the data that Mr. Diamond is quoting is erroneous and anecdotal and I don't believe that there's any fact base behind it. I don't know how there could be. Sheriff Napier has indicated time and time again that if there have been instances of racial profiling, to please bring it to him and to his staff. And to date, there has been nothing substantive or actual that proves the way that Mr. Diamond is presenting what happens with the Stone Garden Grants. The Stone Garden Grants are not free money. There's no such thing as free money, but it is designed to help protect the citizenry along certain areas of our border lands that are subject to violence, gun, illegal gun dealing, and human trafficking. These need to be addressed. They were addressed fine for 12 years prior to this past year and suddenly they're not. And it makes no sense to me that our community should be put at risk like this without those grants.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, you have 30 seconds to respond.
There is no anecdotal evidence for racial profiling, but there is statistical evidence and based on the statistics supplied by the sheriff's department and based on expert analysis of those statistics, the overwhelming conclusion is that racial profiling is taking place. And in any case, that is the perception of our communities that are stopped by sheriff's deputies and that are harassed. So the perception is important as well.
Thank you. Mr. Christie, you have a minute and a half for this question. What do you see as your role in the public controversy over funding and oversight of the sheriff's department?
I believe that my role is to be an advocate for law enforcement and to make sure that the sheriff and the sheriff's department are fully funded to provide the protection of our citizens. This is a key fundamental function of the Board of Supervisors. The sheriff is a duly elected official. He should be allowed to make the decisions based on that. He has the opportunity to make sure that whatever he needs, he can ask for and he should receive and he should not be subject to the Board of Supervisors' scrutiny. One of the issues that has come up time and time again over the Stone Garden Grants is the, I would say, the inappropriate insertion by the Board of Supervisors into the operation of the sheriff's department. The sheriff is his own entity. He has the right to run his own division and the Board of Supervisors, because of political purposes and political inclinations, should not allow such important issues such as funding to protect our citizens to be allowed into the conversation about the discretion and the operation of the sheriff's department. I think it's a bad policy that our board has taken on over the last couple of years, particularly when the preceding 12 years, there was not a problem at all with receiving the same kind of grants. So the sheriff should have the autonomy and the control of his own department as an elected official and the Board of Supervisors should remain out of his business and let him do his job. The voters have the final say.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, you have one minute to respond.
I disagree with the suggestion that the sheriff should be allowed complete autonomy from the board. The Board of Supervisors, if you read the Arizona Revised Statutes, has a statutory responsibility to supervise, to supervise every official in the county who has budgetary responsibilities and that includes the sheriff. So to suggest that the sheriff should have complete autonomy is incorrect in my view and I would prefer to see a much more collaborative approach between the board and all of the elected department heads, like the sheriff, like the county attorney, like the treasurer, or other elected officials who run county departments. There should be collaboration between them and the board and not complete autonomy. That is not the best way to build our community and build community unity.
Thank you very much. Mr. Christie, you have 30 seconds to respond.
There are certain areas that the board does have oversight, and that is his budget, and that's about it. If the voters are not in sync with what the sheriff is doing, if the voters of Pima County feel that he is not running his department in a manner that is acceptable to them, they, and they alone, have the final say, and that's as it should be. I believe that the voters can make that determination better. And from all indications, Sheriff Napier has been over backwards to be accommodating to all segments of our society, and I sincerely hope he is reelected.
Thank you very much. Mr. Diamond, this question is for you first, one and a half minutes. We've seen an increasing burden on our county libraries to provide social services, including computer and internet access for those who can't afford it at home, lunch and snacks for children, things like that. Do you think other county social services should receive more funding so that librarians can focus more on books and literary programming?
I think that our libraries are a great community resource for all kinds of possibilities. Now, as far as specific activities are concerned, I feel that the entire county budget needs to be revisited with a fine-tooth comb and funding and functions reallocated where necessary. If the librarians are saying that some of these new requirements are imposing an excessive burden on their jobs and are keeping them from doing what they see as their core responsibilities, their core duties, then I think we should listen to what the librarians are saying and find other ways of providing those services. On the other hand, if we can amplify and enhance what the libraries are doing without overburdening the librarians, I think the libraries have a wonderful opportunity to become community centers that will help all of the population.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Christie, you have one minute to respond.
I just want to mention that one of the accomplishments I'm most proud of is the fact that out in the Vail area, we will be groundbreaking here in a few months, the new Esmond Station Library. It's a very exciting project for not only Pima County, but for the Vail community. They're ecstatic over it, and it's going to be a real gem in the whole Vail, Corona, Tucson region. This might be everybody's lucky day regarding this question and my answer, because I really can't find too much disagreement over the overall perspective that Mr. Diamond has established about the function and roles of the library. So until I see certain areas that there are out there that are somewhat questionable, I would agree that the libraries can serve as a very integral source of community involvement and a center of activity for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Thank you. And I'm very pleased to find an area of agreement here as well. And I also agree that the new Vail Library will be a jewel to the community, and I'm very much in favor of that.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Christie, you have one and a half minutes to respond to this question. This came from an audience member, and you've mentioned a little bit about this, but I want to make sure that this is covered. What do you think about having a bond for repairing our county roads? Mr. Christie, you have one and a half minutes.
When all else has failed, sometimes you, and you have a dangerous situation, sometimes certain elements of financing, like bonding, might be appropriate. However, that came before the voters, which is something that I moved on the Board of Supervisors, that it does come before the voters. And it was turned down substantially to do any bonding. We are going to be doing, in order to make up for the lost revenue for, as a result of the COVID crisis, we're going to be doing some certificates of participation to jumpstart the pay-go program to the tune of about $56 million in this first year, the first fiscal year. These are very short-term, extremely low-interest types of bonding. And I think at this particular point, certificates of participation, in this instance, make sense. They can be paid off quickly at very relatively low expense. But as far as a general bonding issue, no. I listened to the voters. They are not in favor of that, and that type of general bonding is not appropriate for road repair.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, you have one minute to respond.
Well, once again, there's a large area of agreement that Mr. Christie and I have on this issue. I agree with the certificates of participation. I do note that the voters turned down the last bond issue request for roads. I do think, though, also, that the pay-go program is never going to be adequate to the level of repair and maintenance that we need for our roads. And the other part that we need to add to this is to lobby the state and continue lobbying the state to return to us the highway use funds and the vehicle license funds that the state seized that should be going to the counties. Those funds were supposed to help finance county road repairs, and the state has been holding on to a large share of them since the 2008 recession. So we need to elect a legislature and a governor who will return those funds to the counties where they belong.
Thank you. Mr. Christie, you have 30 seconds to respond.
There needs to be deep and severe per-funding allocation reform. That is one of the most convoluted, complicated procedures of how that money is distributed to jurisdictions, cities, and towns. And there is, in my estimation, a great deal of unfairness and inequity as to how it is dispersed. And yes, we do need to center on getting our fair share, but up at the State House and the legislature, that program of per-fund distribution really needs reformation.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, you have one and a half minutes for this question. Since the county's bonding capacity is growing, what investments in Pima County's infrastructure would you consider? Now, you've already talked about transportation. Outside of that, what kind of investments in infrastructure would you consider?
Well, I'd love to talk in this context about a project that is near and dear to my heart. You know, I said I'd observed the current board, and I had made relationships with primarily the Democrats on the board. But my greatest friend and closest relationship on the board was with the late Richard Elias. I miss him terribly. He was a great friend and mentor to me. And the last time that Richard and I sat down together, he told me of his vision for a new county park, a Rincon Mountain Park, that would complement the Tucson Mountain Park, an East Side Mountain Park to complement the West Side Mountain Park. As it happens, the county has been buying properties in the Reddington Pass area for the last 20 or 25 years, and it would be possible to plan to consolidate those properties for the purpose of environmental preservation and water conservation, and also to set aside some areas for public recreation. So that would be a jewel in the Rincon Mountains, and I would like to invest and propose the Richard Elias Rincon Mountain Park.
Thank you. Mr. Christie, you have one minute to respond.
Well, I think that Mr. Diamond might find that there's going to be a lot of disagreement with not only the acquisition of the property and how it's going to be used, but certainly about naming it, as he suggests. There are many people in the Rincon Valley and the Vail area, I think, have been just as vocal and just as adamant about community involvement and community leadership, that the naming of that area, should it ever come to such a matter, might be a bit more controversial than Mr. Diamond's making it appear.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Diamond, 30 seconds.
Well, I'll just say that, in my estimation, Richard Elias was a great public servant for Pima County. He was a tireless champion for working families and for the disadvantaged in our community. And I think that his legacy is worth mentioning. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Christie, we'll start with you, one and a half minutes. How can you balance the concerns of the business community with the concerns of the health and safety of individual residents in Pima County?
Well, that has been the issue that's facing us and has become so volatile and divided. There are certainly ways that the county can approach businesses. The perception, as Mr. Diamond has referred to perception in past discussions this afternoon, the perception is that the county views the business community as an entity that cannot be trusted to do the right thing, that the business community is made up of the quote-unquote "bad guys." And the business community has been given, I think, a very difficult challenge to try to meet the recommendations, recommendations is a nice way of saying, insertions into their operations by the government, without fully exploring the unintended consequences that have occurred as a result of these draconian insertions. For instance, the Wall of Shame, where folks snitch on one another, and those complaints are unsubstantiated, and they get into the social media and the viral world, and they absolutely wreak havoc on a business. And this is one of the areas where I think the county, trying to do some issues with the public health, have failed to meet the obligations in the business community.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, one minute to respond.
First of all, I think public health and safety is job number one and responsibility number one for the county. And I think that, to some extent, it is a false choice, a false dichotomy, that says that we must support either public health at the expense of the business community, or support the business community at the expense of public health. I think that the interests of both groups are more aligned than is generally acknowledged. Because if the population succumbs to the pandemic, then the businesses won't have any customers. So I think we need to find more creative ways of supporting business owners who are struggling, who are in difficulty, but at the same time, keep the public health at the top of our list.
Thank you. Mr. Christie, 30 seconds.
The business ownership and the business community are some of the most creative and resilient entities and citizens in our community. If the government and the proclamations by the Board of Supervisors would be revisited and revised and amended, and take more consideration into how these businesses are being affected by these public health measures, they would find that the businesses are most willing to be accommodating and do whatever they can to follow the rules. And I think they have not been given an adequate chance, and they should be.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, you're first with one and a half minutes. This summer was the hottest on record, and with cooling centers closed, many families and children who don't have central air conditioning in their homes were suffering. Do you think the county should increase the number of cooling centers in the future, as we are surely going to face increasingly hotter weather over time?
Yes, I do. I think that, again, public health is job number one, responsibility number one, public health and safety for the county, and that to the extent that families are suffering because of the hot weather, and as you said, we have had record hot temperatures this summer, that we must find ways of protecting our population.
Thank you. Mr. Christie, one minute.
I would like to see an assessment of the cooling centers that we already have, see what their adequacy or inadequacy is or are. And that before we embark on a very expensive proposition, without knowing the full needs or the full facts behind them, I think would be somewhat premature and irresponsible. So before we made that step of committing to more centers, I would like to see a more detailed analysis of what we do have, and then to decide the actual need that we might have.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, 30 seconds to respond.
I agree.
All right. You didn't need the whole 30 seconds after all, huh? All right. Mr. Christie, this is a question from the audience. Is there data showing or not showing undocumented people are an actual threat to the residents of Pima County? And please cite.
I think that the data is showing that there are immigration issues that are related to certain criminal activities. I think that's a foregone conclusion. I think that that data can be mined easily with the arrests and with the stoppage of the trafficking that's going on. So certainly, there are all sorts of informational areas within law enforcement, on all of the areas that they are concerned with in fighting these illicit and illegal activities, from human trafficking to illegal gun dealing, to all of the other related areas of crime and violence that are being perpetrated in the border areas and the borderlands, as well as the fact that it cascades over into the rest of the community. So I'm certain that that data exists. I don't have it before me, but I know that it could easily be translated into something that could be more definite as far as how that data is compiled.
Thank you very much. Mr. Diamond, you have one minute to respond.
Well, there certainly are illegal activities occurring across our border with Mexico. There's no question about that. However, all the data that I've seen, and I know there have been numerous studies about this dating back for several decades at least, show that rates of crime in immigrant communities throughout the United States are lower than crime rates in non-immigrant communities. And those data are incontrovertible, as far, I can't cite specifics either, but I know that I have read numerous studies about that, and they have shown every time that crime rates are lower in immigrant communities. So to say that immigrants across the board are a danger to our community is not the case.
Thank you. Mr. Christie, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Just to reiterate, I feel there is an issue of safety and a concern with the immigration policies that are being broken, and that there is a definite need to watch our borders, to watch who comes in and why, and that we owe that to our citizens, our tax-paying citizens, to protect their livelihood and their property and their lives. So whether it's all immigrants, of course not. But certainly, there are connections to the immigrant movement that can be equated with criminal activity.
Thank you very much. And now we have our last question, and Mr. Diamond, you will be starting out. What actions would you take in the future to improve public health across the county and decrease health disparities by income and race and ethnicity? Mr. Diamond, you have one and a half minutes.
Yes, thank you. Well, the county already has a robust public health system, and I would study the extent to which it's able to be utilized by the communities would study the extent to which it's able to be utilized by the communities who are less able to pay for public health services. I know the county really already is doing quite a bit in this area, and I would look for input from the community as to where it's falling short. I do believe that healthcare is an essential human right, and that, again, public health is job number one for the county, and we should be able to provide it to all of our residents. So again, I would want to study where we're falling short, and I would want to try to find ways that we can make up for those deficiencies.
Thank you. Mr. Christie, you have one minute.
We keep overlaying the COVID-19 issue as the health issue, the number-one health issue, but there are other health issues as a result of trying to deal with the COVID-19 health pandemic. And that is the the ancillary health issues that have been created by the shutdown of our economy, by the closure of businesses, by the laying off of employees. We've seen a spike in depression, in opioid and drug use, in suicides, and child abuse, and domestic violence. These are as important health issues to deal with and to recognize as is the COVID virus. And I don't believe that our county health department has taken fully into consideration these facts that are severely affecting our community. I also believe that the best and the most efficient way for public health to improve is to give job opportunity and economic development and jobs created in our county.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, you have 30 seconds to respond.
I think perhaps Mr. Christie's last statement, I may be misinterpreting it, but I think it implies that the main source of health insurance ought to be through employment. And I think that that model has been thoroughly debunked, especially during this pandemic. I think it's up to government to really step in and to help provide healthcare where it's lacking in the private sector.
Thank you. And I thank each of you. You now each have one minute for a closing statement. Mr. Christie, we will start with you.
I'd just like to again thank everybody for putting on this forum from the League of Women Voters. I'd like to thank my opponent, Mr. Diamond, for agreeing to participate in this with me. And I just want to highlight a few things that I think are very important for the last four years that I want to continue for the next four. And that is the the most important area that I think is so important that we recognize are the the road and infrastructure improvements. In my district, we've improved and enhanced Valencia Road, extension over the Pantano Wash. We've done enhancements on Sabadita, Wilmot, Houghton, thoroughfares there, the library at Esmond Station, a joint police and sheriff substation. We formed the Southeast Regional Council in the Vail, Corona, Tucson area to act as one unified voice addressing concerns out there. We've established a brand-new Open Trails Park in Green Valley. We've given support to the Green Valley Council for its engagement. We work with HOAs and associations to have their voices heard. So I see my time is up, but I want to continue in those efforts that we've already accomplished.
Thank you. And Mr. Diamond, you have one minute for your closing statement.
Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters, to the public, and thank you, Mr. Christie, for agreeing to participate in this. I think it's been very instructive. I think the voters have seen, for example, some contrast between us based on belief in science, belief in reasoned approach to county government. And I just want to say that I'm in this because I want to go to work for all the people of Pima County. I'm passionate about including the voices that aren't often heard or that aren't often listened to, as well as the ones that are. I'm not discounting the business community. I think that it deserves equal equal voice as well. But I want to work for all the people of Pima County, and I'm asking the voters for their support. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us. This is the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson. Thank you for joining this forum. And thank you, candidates, for sharing your thoughts and opinions with the audience members. You can view a recording of this forum on the Facebook page for the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson, as well as our YouTube channel. This is Vivian Hart for the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson. Goodbye.